This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we have a packed agenda today. We have a list of things I'm hoping we get to really quick. The main event starts. Brad, I'm gonna put you off the lead one because you could be our longest one, but Kimball, do you want to start with the internship?
Sure.
Just a quick overview of what you're talking about.
Certainly. So I run for about four weeks, about two hours a day. Brad has participated in it for many years, I think, about four. So I had one request. There were a few questions that should be emailed, but if anyone else had any questions.
This is where we have gotten some of our line of now workforce, right?
I think Brad hired three employees out of the company.
Is this a paid internship?
No. No. It's more a work study. I just kind of copied what they wanted on that floor. So am I good to sign that?
Yeah, I think we'll just have to approve that at our board meeting on Monday.
He just needs it for tomorrow, so.
Anyone who's got any complaints? Peter join us? Okay, I don't think he had any complaints either. Sure. Well, I am a few names official on Monday.
Okay, make it official, but sorry.
Jason, you have any problems with the post work internship? Good. Okay. He answered my question. Okay, and then item number three. Hartley Davidson comes down with a parade around the lake. I don't know if you want to say anything on that, Bill. I think it's just one trip around.
Apparently it's one trip around the lake. You know, what shape Main Street will be at that point, I have no idea. But they want to leave from, what is it?
Hampton.
Hampton Inn, go around the lake once. So it shouldn't be much of a traffic direction, forty to fifty bites is what I understand. Okay, so is there some here or a roof as?
I have no information at all.
You're not gonna be out there in a bike. Okay, well, that'll be something we'll bring to the board. So unless you have any questions now, okay. Bill, Bill.
He's on duty.
Bill, is there anything that you want to add to the mix and tell us what's going on with the stewardship on Mirror Lake?
All right. Well, it's basically gonna be on the weekends, ten hours a day, seven thirty to six. The need is to actually get some data so we kind of find out where the boats are coming from, to inspect the boats. This is not going to be an aggressive type of program, but it is going to be trying to collect data so we can figure out. And access. What's that? So we can assess the the impact or lack of impact of invasive species to see if there's anything that we need to do to protect the lake further from invasive species. And the stewards are the same as the stewards that are at the state boat launch site. It's the same program.
Okay, and if I could just add there, Bill, my understanding with the state boat launch is that they have no legal power. They're really there for an advisory position, and that's what this would be modeled after?
Yeah, exactly, exactly right. There isn't anything that they can do if somebody is not cooperative. But we do find that ninety-nine percent of the people that put in over to state boat launch site are cooperative, and most do want to know. So it is informative for them. It'll be informative for us, too.
Okay, and I think from you and I having our conversation earlier, this person will be probably set up over by the gazebo or by the tennis courts. And when they see someone coming to put in, just go over and give them literature or inform them. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Asked to inspect the boat also, and to make sure that there isn't anything hidden, especially with kayaks. Some of the hidden areas in kayaks where you have the villages where you can store things sometimes can have some invasive species.
Okay. Unless you've got more to add, I'd ask the board members at this point, do you have any questions or? Okay, great. Well, we'll put that on the agenda for Monday.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. The other issue, let's go back to number one on the agenda. And that's been an issue that's been brought up, an issue that we don't have a good answer to, and we really have to make a decision. I don't have my notes on all the, I have a whole lot of pros and cons, I'm not sure if I brought those with me or not. But what we really need to do is, from what I remember, is if we do decide to allow people to put in heated sidewalks, we pretty much can figure we're not going to have a guarantee on any of the sidewalks by Koberki that we put in. Once we change what, they won't be the ones putting them in, and they'll be, now we'll be changing the base that they have. And that was one of the biggest arguments, if I can remember.
Correct.
Anything you want to add or you'd like to throw out?
Yeah, I have a copy of ASPECT geothermals when they do the comparison. This shows just the heat consumption of what the options they were looking at when we were talking about completely heating the sidewalk. And at that time, we came to the agreement that was not something that we wanted to pursue. It's a very, it's a lot of electricity in whom we talk about. Kimball, look at the electric, but you'd have to give them more information than just we're heating the sidewalk. You have to know what we're heating it with and how we were heating it. There's been a handful of people that have reached out, but in the locations that this goes in, in the sidewalk, since the construction company will not be installing it, it will limit their compaction and it'll also could adversely affect even, they will not warranty the areas that this is in. So if this becomes an area where you have one that's heated, one that's not, one that's heated, one that's not, if it gets, if there is a reason for this to cause, they will not. And I mean, you can't expect them to.
We have a similar problem with our drains on Main Street, if I'm not mistaken. The drains are at three feet and the surrounding road is at five, and the frost difference, and that's why you always see our drains coming up and have to be readjusted every year. So it is a concern. And I did talk to Kimball about the electric, and he said there are key times that we would want to have people not. I think it was like eight to ten in the morning and five to seven at night.
Yes.
And I don't know how you would regulate that, but those are the times that it could put us into a higher, out of our hydro allocation.
It would put us further out.
Well, I mean, this was based on every single section of the sidewalk being replaced, being heated, and we found that, I mean, we're under one green infrastructure grant. I don't know how less green than we are than burning all that electricity up there and also. So that was one of the reasons why we went away from this. Also, the calculations he had here, I mean, there was like six million, six hundred thousand BTU hours over the course of the that would heat the completist.
Well, I think, well, I was a couple of years old, where about eighty percent of our electricity is hydro, there's a twenty percent, but that would definitely be into about eighty percent.
Correct. And the thing is, is like the contractor is considering, how are we gonna coordinate this? How are we? Because there's a very limited amount of time when they go through. They put in their liner, put in their base stone and their layers. The very top layer of stone is where this goes. So there would have to be a time, depending on who's there, to say, okay, now it's time to throw this in. We gotta get it done immediately, and then they're coming through. Because that's, since it wasn't added as part of this contract, I guess we need an answer whether we're moving forward and pursue this, or whether we're gonna tell everybody. It's just, we, it's too late. We just need an answer for it. Yes. Granted, we're not going to the sidewalk till next year, but we need an answer to get this out there so people can either plan for it or our fear is that if a lot of people jumped on, how could you do it if not one person was doing the whole contract? If every building had their own plumber up there doing it, how are you gonna coordinate thirty plumbers, thirty people working inside of? And plus, the other thing is, it appears that every single person that works up there within the state right away will have to have a highway work permit. They cannot park under our highway work permit to do this. So they, every contractor that's up there working will have to reach out to the state and have a highway work permit for working in the right way.
I know we'd like to have an answer a month ago, but give us a drop dead date. You need to know one way or the other, like within the week, within?
Yes, we need to know so we can move forward to this, there are people.
Okay.
At least. And then again, how are we gonna, I mean, we're taking a big risk if a bunch of people jump on and we have a huge portion of the sidewalk under our feet.
Yes. We have a number of businesses or building owners that are looking into it already.
Three, right, three is all I had.
So.
Smoke signals has to go back in. That was part of this thing because it was pre-existing. So this was there, so that will go back in. Ricky will be putting that back in.
What we're looking at is inconsistencies in the sidewalk where there could be two buildings coming together to want it, there's some who doesn't, another person wants it, two buildings who don't, so it could fluctuate. And then on top of that, if there are larger numbers, if they have individual funders or installations, I mean, can our hold them to some sort of standards or consistency amongst?
Well, that, it's not just standards, coordination. Because the contractor is not gonna put the brakes on to the way if somebody can't get there, it almost, I just don't see any way that we can regulate it. That's my whole thing, how we, it's not like right now we could tell them, everybody wants to do it, you go get it in there, we're going over the top of it next year. It can't be, it has to be in the top layer, so you have to have Koberki come in and do a portion of the work when they go by. Then you have to jump out there and get it in there, get it into your basement, get it into the electric boiler, and then we'll come back and finish. So you got like a very small window because the subcontractor is gonna go through after Koberki goes through, they're gonna be right behind the lane of stones, so you've got almost no time to hold. But if it's something we want to pursue, we gotta get a letter out, we have to get this all, and.
So what is Koberki not warranting? The material or the installation?
Anything.
Anything that has to do with the sidewalk?
With the heating, if the heating's in that portion.
Did they anticipate any failure? I mean, you know, are they just saying, hey, if you do this?
They can't warranty. How can they warranty? Because it's not gonna be their workmanship in the sidewalk. That's why they will not warranty it, because, you know, we done putting in work, another person putting in work, and then they finish on top of that.
So all they would be responsible for is putting the piece of granite on top of whatever?
Yeah, they would be responsible for that as part of the contract, but a year from now, if something's settled, or if something was out of whack, it would be on us to fix.
And then they're on the taxpayer.
Because they will not warranty if it's in this one of these locations, which I understand.
Sure.
Jackie, I said to Brad, what usually, what may happen is the heated section won't freeze and the cold section will freeze, and then there'll be heat. So the transition between the cold to heated and cold is where it's gonna be.
And we don't, we never really had that issue.
I just.
We've got the case now, but.
Those are just concrete bricks that are much smaller, these are big slabs.
And we're not even sure how it's gonna react with this being, instead of, like right now, that heating is, you have like a two inch, I think they're two and a quarter inch thick bricks, and now you're gonna have a three inch slab of granite, and then one or two inches under that. You're trying to heat five inches where now you're heating basically two and a quarter. I just, I don't know how it's gonna work.
May I ask, what, we've vetted this.
That's what I knew that was.
Now, what, that kind of ties into the number of people who requested, because I'm just, I'm unclear as to why we're opening back up this discussion in the sense that there doesn't seem to be an overwhelming desire on behalf of the building owners for that to happen. I just, or maybe I'm wrong, I just don't.
Like we said, we do have three people who would like to do it, we need an answer to them. If we're going to allow those three people, then we have to for everybody. That becomes the dilemma.
Sure. That's, that's.
Did they express their interest during the planning phase that they wanted to do this, but now that they know?
Just in the last two months. That's, that's. We remember how we went through this so many times, and then we decided, okay, it's out.
We went through all the.
Yeah, we went through and said it's out. Well, when we went through all the planning stage, it never really was brought back up.
I was deflated because I thought this would be one of those ideal, say, Mirror Lake, maybe salt, and, but it didn't seem to work.
Okay, hold on. As far as from my point, unless the whole thing is done, it doesn't save me any extra work.
So how would we handle smoke signals if that?
Go back in.
It has to, but as Peter was saying, you're gonna have a sidewalk adjacent to it that's not heated, there's gonna be frost heaves?
Possibly.
Possibly. We don't know.
And we're still gonna be responsible for?
No.
No.
That's Koberki putting that back in, because that's in the contract.
Okay.
That's a pre-existing condition they know about, that this will be on them to reconnect.
Well, they're reliant because we're essentially, if we move forward on any of that stuff, we're changing the terms of the agreement.
Of the agreement.
And that's, I mean, they don't want to be held up because some are gonna show up. No, I know, there were several reasons I could see where it would be not have a date to open up.
With something like this, you hate to say no, but it's something that we have to either say no or say yes. Somebody has to raise something to get it out to everybody, give them an absolute deadline date to tell us they want to do it, and get their design done. Because are we gonna allow more than one kind of system? Or we only gonna allow one kind of system? Or are they, it's, it's just opens up so many. I mean, you know how much we talked about this. We beat it to death for like two years.
And maybe as the board, we didn't communicate it to the public as much as we could have, how we.
Well, that's why I brought, that's why I brought copies of the original thing and everything went through and.
With IN and other organizations.
Paid all the money to do this study, and basically I don't.
Well, it doesn't sound like this is worth doing.
I said, depends on who you talk to. Yeah.
Well, the three people who want to do it, or do you, seems like more liability on us if we move forward, so.
Because I tried to work with the contractor and tried to figure out how we can make this work. And what's brought this to a head so bad is the waterline issues with people getting new waterlines. The contractor said that they would be able to do it, and then they found out that they cannot, they cannot take on separate contracts with every person up there to try to do this. They thought they could, and then their insurance said, no absolute way are you doing this. And if you're gonna go with an extra width, say they're going to work for somebody else up there that's not us, that's a whole separate work permit, that's a whole separate deal. You are not gonna run it under the villages if you're working for somebody else. So it turns into a whole, so they backed right out and said they're not doing anything for anybody but the village up there, so.
Plus it comes down to your state work permit.
So anybody that's doing this work up there within the right way has to get a highway work.
I think we should sustain them.
I agree.
We've got, we've got a week until whatever. Why don't we let Peter and Mark and Kimball and Brad talk it through and?
These guys, if we do allow, we should have a higher rate for people to use them.
That could be part of the recommendation, possibly. I don't know if it's legal, but maybe you find someone who's, whoever's put in one in, it's a law.
Well, it really sounds like, this was researched. And we've been doing it two years ago. If we were gonna do it, we would have had it in this initial plan and had it be an option. I mean, obviously, I'm one of the buildings wants to do it because I have a side that's side heated next to me, so it makes sense to continue that. But if we're not sure, A, it's gonna work with the, I think it's the way you present it. You say the sidewalk's not gonna be warranted, we're not sure if it's even gonna work if you do put it in. It's just not something that's.
And of course, in your case, it would be not as big a deal because now it's gonna be one continuous heated sidewalk. Only two spots that have.
But like in your case, say, anybody that wants to do this is gonna have to get somebody to know something about this, put a plan together.
Right.
Get a permit started and make sure, and then you got to coordinate with them because they could tell you they're gonna be a fat section of sidewalk in.
Tuesday.
June. Or it could be three months off. You know, I mean, the guy reasons that, okay, they're ready, they're gonna be there next week, and then have something else happen. That's what, you can't, there's, how can you have people just waiting at your building, just waiting to do this? That's my whole problem.
Why is it not gonna work in this scenario?
Yeah, and again, I want to circle back to maybe as a board, we could have communicated thoroughly, we looked at it. Because there was certainly pushing for it and pushing to create a, like, the new Peter, but just as far as public and heat from, just really just out of the box ideas, we did everything we could. Ideally, it would be fantastic.
All right, so I gather the consensus is that it was something we looked into, a great idea, if it didn't work. I guess if you really want to put the finishing touches on it, it's really not going in the direction of saving energy, kind of the planet by using up our hydro allocation at Main Street.
I was the biggest proponent, too. It's just too much. Oh, but it wasn't your animus from the board.
Right, and the thing that would concern me hearing, like, an actual two inches to be through or three inches to be through, I'm not sure if it's gonna work or not.
It's like a big cast iron rating.
That's a, that's a big game.
Then, it's not laying on sand or anything like that, laying on stones, because the sidewalk is permeable. So there's a bedding stone layer, so that you're putting these pipes in on top of stone.
So I think if that's all written off, I think it's gonna make sense that any of the others that wanted this, it's, it's just not gonna work in this scenario.
And then on one of five, my perspective was, and it kind of ties into what you're saying, being consistent throughout, having the same, and if we know, really, year one, instead of having it as a whole, you know, everyone can find.
And I don't know who here would want to be the one to go to the Main Street merchants and say, we're delaying this job because heated sidewalks. I think everyone would like to have this job done as quickly as we can, and this certainly would delay it. Okay. Was there anything else to come up other than before we let Greg and George have his work?
I have two quick.
Okay.
We settled on the digger truck, so I think that can be on the agenda for Monday. There's no problems. It's gonna be three hundred and seven thousand, okay, dollars a hand. The hybrids that we talked about last time, the OGS bid ended up saving us seventeen hundred dollars over the source well, seventeen hundred dollars between the two of them. Then there's an additional twenty-two hundred dollars in nice sort of money. So altogether, you know, thirty million dollars.
So are you ready, Bill?
We're ready.
But that's still the two E V rep.
Yes. Close the digger and you won't see me again for six months.
I promise. As my father said, you've got to be an expensive date.
Figure one year, two years.
Yeah.
Two, two and a half.
If we wait till June, we move on.
Great. As you all know, the Village and Town have a very tough decision to make on what's going to happen with our events this year. And luckily, we have two people, we have four people here that are experts in the field that they're. Want to go together? You want one of these start first?
I'd like to have Kim and Emery.
You have an overview? Sure, it's gonna be that. Good ideas. So from here, over here? Oh, go ahead, Emery.
We have had many conversations with the town. Last week, we said that we would propose a recommendation to the Village and Town Board and how we could potentially execute a large fence, Ironman and La Crosse this summer in a way that we felt would be more accommodating to our community as well as continue our long relationship with the La Crosse and Ironman. So we did send that to the Village and the Town Board on Saturday mornings, and our recommendation is, and we're general, and Joe, he go into any detail that he likes, but that all of the athletes, vendors, staff, volunteers are vaccinated, we partner vaccination in a designated event period, that the events are reduced by twenty percent. So mandatory vaccination and reduction in the events that is required. We had conversations, just chat to the state, and we had conversations with county, and they're strongly supportive of this direction.
Actually, the county, county is the board supervisor chair of the health department. Let's do that. A thousand percent support is what he said, that this is the way we should proceed. We've also rented up the ladder through the control room to the state, and they are very supportive of this and will stand behind it totally. And, you know, so we feel pretty confident this is a good direction. There's clearly, there's not other communities that are doing it like this, but we think it puts us in the best position for proof of vaccination primarily. Other areas are doing proof of vaccination and also testing, but it's a little more difficult with multi-day and long, and some events lasting, some visitors coming for longer stays than two or three days, where some of the quick testing happens. We do have PCR testing in Saranac Lake, it's limited in number, it's a forty-hour trip around, so the testing option is difficult. We've certainly chatted with La Crosse and with George and also with Ironman at great length over the past couple of days. We think this is, you know, logistically a little difficult, but we think between now and then, we can figure out a system that is put in place so that we can guarantee people that are participating at any level on the events are gonna have to have proof of vaccination. And we feel that that will really put us in a position, community-wise, and also with the event, that it'll be less restrictive than not having those requirements. Because the, once you're vaccinated, a lot of the, you know, the protocols change a little bit, and they become easier and more manageable. We feel it's probably, you know, the events will look at it as it's very unusual happening right now that anybody would go to that level, but after talking with the state and the county, we feel very confident that this is the direction to go at this point, to gain their support on this event, and also help us work with the logistics of it, with the two groups that we're primarily concentrating on so that we can have a smooth operation. And we feel that this is the only way we can get these events back to a more normal situation. Without having proof of vaccination, it's a whole different story. We feel our community will also feel most confident in doing it this way. So that's, in a nutshell, that's what it's been. We've had a lot of discussions with George, Greg, and others at Ironman as well, and Ashley, who was with George's group, too. And we feel that this is, it puts us almost in a very good leadership role going at this level right now, too. We feel other organizations and other areas will sort of mimic us pretty quickly.
We did talk to some other destinations that are, you know, strongly and, you know, reducing their events significantly, you know, for the same reasons that we're concerned, you know, community safety, community stake for events in general.
You know, there's other challenges we have, too, and, you know, the twenty percent reduction is, you know, a combination of other issues as well. Certainly, what we all have going on on Main Street affects things. Also, you know, the staff and employee situation, a lot of our businesses and restaurants are probably more difficult than it's ever been. So staffing the community up, we're actually gonna be doing a pretty good outreach starting at the Thursday, but the staffing issue was also something with concern.
And it is, you know, we do have to keep in mind the experience of, you know, people that come to visit here in our region, whether for their event or the leisure travel, the experience is good, they're happy, if it's bad, they share, they share a lot. The experience is good, they're happy, if it's bad, they share, they share a lot, so it could have a very negative impact on our region long term. If we don't try and manage the amount of people coming into the community from the safety perspective, as well as from what our community can handle.
We also feel we have responsibility to these two particular groups, because they've been a backbone of a lot of activity over the last. In George's case, I think approaching thirty-five years, George approaching, uh, and, uh, Ironman is probably approaching twenty-five. Twenty-three, twenty-three, um, so we feel that we also have, uh, you know, responsibility to making sure that their event goes as smooth as possible. And that we put them in a position, we have, uh, we have light path forward as well. We feel that by having proof of vaccination being the criteria, it puts everybody in a position of more comfort moving forward. Some people will be, say, where, you know, it's way too much overloaded, but the bottom line is, we don't know what the situation will be in August right now. And this puts us in a position where the organizations have plenty of time to let their participants know well in advance. And it puts us in the safest position here in the.
You could lie, but I seen cars on the internet.
Well.
Now it's perfect, it won't be perfect.
There's no such thing.
You know, certainly the.
They'll go up to seventy percent for the country.
Yeah, the Excel's your pass, the state has and other ones will certainly be implemented to a certain extent as we move this forward. Those are instant IDs, they're confidential, and there's probably room to work with that. The state is encouraged that we're taking, recommending this step, and they will certainly kind of, uh, help us any way they can with their Excel's your pass.
So does that mean you'll work with Ironman?
We certainly will, because it's, it's putting burden on them as well, so that we feel, um, yeah.
Yes, no, that's a youth event, so it's not possible to have everybody vaccinated.
Yes.
You know, so there, what we're thinking for that, that's much smaller, that's gonna be forty sixteen for fifty-six for twenty nineteen. Um, so we're gonna be ten teams smaller, and I think what we're gonna focus up there is trying to make sure all the adults that want to attend. If anybody over eighteen wants to attend the event, should show proof of vaccination or a positive or negative test.
Negative.
It'll be twelve till that, that will be going to affect.
But there won't be time. There's no time, again, August shows, there's no issues. August is very sensible, the challenge, Russ, is gonna be exercising twenty percent out of this, it's gonna be painful, so what we're committed to doing is.
I think Chief Moore has a way to formally get twenty percent stuff.
Well, we've been talking about it for sure. Okay, I need, what I really would like to do, um, would be to come back in three weeks or so with a specific, like, August, we started. Our ability now to go shrink that and move some things out of here. We need some temporary plans for that, because my concern has been, you know, besides COVID. There's, believe me, events have been operating all around the country, all year, during all of this. Right, no, we're, we're so better. I'll be brought to events and won't leave anywhere, not one contract or anything required. So it's safe to do these things, but they're certainly, yeah, because the community is in a position to accept. I think for a little bit, thirty-two years. It's, it's a challenging period right now, a lot of fronts, so we don't wanna overwhelm the community with demand that can't be satisfied. So we're gonna work on the next couple of weeks to officially move some of the elements out of here. Hopefully elements that will be important to this community in terms of what demographic that might be. But we'd like to just try to keep it confidential for a couple of weeks, when we make our arrangements, get things tied up, and when it's announced, we'll deal with it. It's not gonna be easy, but we're willing to do it. So George, uh, Jason and I were just talking, you're gonna follow the same protocols as high school lacrosse as well?
Oh, I've seen that, yes.
For the June event, right?
Yeah, actually exceeding them, yeah.
Well, the high school event, the main flight was that.
Really?
Yeah, they did.
That's not, it's not New York State or Carolina, it's not in New York State.
Well, I was also like, we just keep, generally the feedback that I received across is kind of positive, the only thing, the challenge would be, uh, earlier in the week, there is a younger demographic that plays. And, uh, just like kids that are enthusiastic, they wanna get out outdoors and they, and they blanket Main Street. And, uh, that would be for me, and the feedback that I received would be like the primary challenge, the event itself, I think it would not be that much of a concern. It's the circulation after the fact.
Understood.
It gotta be management of masks on Main Street.
One of the, they, you know, over the years, we've had conversations with the community about how do we get more people on Main Street? Now we're not gonna, how do we keep them off Main Street?
That's also a sense of.
But frankly, we get, one of the advantages of being outdoors in a vast area like that is that it's wide open, there's a lot of room, so things. We don't have any indoor activities proposed, we normally do, legends of it every year, to recognize individuals who contribute to the event. Normally do that indoors, we did an interval last year at the beautiful facility, we can do that outdoors like we did for twenty-five years. Where it's safer and it can fit easily within the guidelines for groups. But, you know, there's not gonna be tailgating, we're not gonna have any of those things going on, that's all gonna be eliminated. Um, any third party vendors and all those would be subject to all the rules and restrictions regarding, you know, testing and so forth, so. It's not gonna be a very similar year, our goal is simply to get people back here, uh, last year was the first year of thirty-two years, we didn't play lacrosse here. Um, and, um, like to get them back and kind of reinvent going forward, we're committed to working with the community to right-size our event. And get it to where it's needed most in the community, and some ideas, and some shoulders that we can do some things. Uh, but we wanna do what's in the best interest of the community first, then we wanna survive this whole thing.
Right, so I, I think what we're concerned about, George, or where the, it's not testing for August, it's vaccine.
Yeah, understood.
Um, and that, you know, that's really the, the August event, I think is the one of more concern.
Understood.
And that's where we have, I think we have an opportunity, seeing that we have Ironman end of July, a few weeks later, you, that we have a way to work out the system. So we can have the system vaccine work seamlessly, as we move it around a little bit. And I, you know, I think that's really what we've gotta focus on, and we'll go public, because the town board meeting will be tonight, word will be out. Uh, that will, normally they have media there, and I think it's important that we let your potential attendees on both groups know that. If both the town and the village, uh, move forward with something, with this, and the county is already on board with it. Um, that we get the word out ASAP, so that anybody that's questioning, you know, coming or anybody that hasn't been vaccinated, that do wanna come, we give them that opportunity.
I just wanna mention one thing, too, when it comes to the June event, we're kind of overlooking it and saying it's not a concern, but I do think that we need to keep top of mind. If there is, which I understand your position is there's not going to be, but if things go south with that event in June. Ironman is obviously gonna be nearly in the.
No, it's understood.
List, so I just don't think we should push it aside.
Oh, it's not being pushed aside by us, I can assure you, because it falls on my back, so we're gonna be sure to follow all the ten pages of procedures that are required. And make sure everybody's healthy and that we identify those that are out there to take the appropriate procedures, but we're talking about.
Right, so are we saying, right, and the adults will be vaccinated for that June event, anybody that's old enough in June.
Yeah, I would suggest, I would strongly suggest, we need to think about the timing here, because it's over, not many weeks away. That the existing protocols may be appropriate for that, that where you can provide a negative test, appropriate negative test for your vaccination.
Uh, it's a two day event, George, is that correct?
It's two and a half, two and a half in this case.
And then.
Right, and the fourth.
And they just kind of tying the initial concern with the like community into Ironman. Again, the, the event itself, the, the competition isn't the overall concern, it's the individuals coming with. That are from all over, coming into the community, whereas that space is then designated and designed to keep people safe. It's the, the people that come with, competitors.
Yeah, well.
That filter into the community, which is that's something that took me mind in planning, that's the event itself, all the feedback on it, like lacrosse. Uh, horsel, the, the event, the competitions are not the concern, it's the people coming with.
Yes.
That en masse, that's what is, which is kind of like, almost like the, the wall, so they won't clear you out or anything like that.
I think, I think I can just answer that, because if we establish a start line, start area and a finish area, start area. When you really look at the logic of it, people don't come to Ironman just to be, it's all, it's all visitors who are associated with an athlete or with a vendor or something like that. So if anybody who comes there wants to see their athlete, they have two spaces primarily, start and at the finish. So the logic being is, if we require vaccines or testing, or if we require them to follow the guidelines, you know, into those venues. During the normal course of the day, when they're outside, they're gonna be the people that are vaccinated while they're in the general public and spreading around. So there, I would, I could surmise that, truth, that those people that wanna come and with their athletes. When they go outside those venues, outside our venues, they're gonna be vaccinated, and it's gonna be safer if not, you know, if not totally covered. By all those people who at some point are gonna wanna go into a finishing site. So that's, that's the logic that we use when we said, when we proposed, this is other, our, our investment, we have that script. Well, we're kind of going the other direction, where we're saying, we have a start and a finish venue, nothing controlled, so you have to show proof of vaccination to get in. Um, and then when you leave that, during the course of the day, or when you're there early in the week, you know, it will be, you'll be, you'll have to pitch in, then basically. We'll have more people in town that are vaccinated or come out.
Sure, and I think that's what I was just trying to use to get out, was to increase volume.
Yeah, exactly, alleviate the areas of concern. I think we use that logic for people who are saying about that. I think those people aren't coming, just a bunch of people, a lot of them, they wanna see them at the starting finish, you know?
Greg, do you have a protocol in place for volunteers, is there gonna be vaccination?
Yeah, same thing, volunteers.
Yeah, we handle volunteers, they run through our office and we'll make sure that's.
So, you know, the volunteers will be, um, required to have a proof of vaccination or testing, whatever the, you guys just are requiring from us to do. The same as the athletes, the same as a vendor, the same as our staff, um, or spectators.
Yeah, I, I have to run to a four fifteen call, I'm awful sorry, but I think that we, we have a system, we think, from work in place. I think the June event, George, we gotta work on, to make sure we get it right there, I think it's gonna be up to both your organization, as Jason just said, to get the messaging out to all of your attendees, so. It's not only athletes, it's, it's vendors, it's spectators, it's family and friends, it's anybody that's coming to it, if they're coming to a class race, they better have proof of vaccination.
And the locals are trying, our citizens know.
Right, we're gonna follow, we're gonna follow the plan to get it out locally. Once, once we get everybody's, uh, support on this, um, is our plan, is to get it out real good, so people know that we're taking action. Action greater than probably any other destination in the country is at this point.
No, the thing, I just wanna go back to what I know. Is this just for clarity, and I'm not, you know, I understand, but you say, you know, to go by the high school, um, you know, guidelines. Are you talking to New York State High School, not our local?
I, I'm thinking if we're in this county, we go by our own.
So I think.
Each, each section is different.
I understand what you're saying, but just so you know, that is, that is the guidelines for our local community. Like our place, she wears that, you know, so just, I wanna put that on the table, so we're not bad for, yeah.
Yeah, again, the, um, as I, I mentioned, some of the lacrosse was misclassified, ball men's lacrosse was classified to higher risk sport, even though no one ever touches the ball. You know, there's minimal hitting in the game, it's, and it's, um, the, uh, the National Federation of Interclassics, uh, sports has reclassified it to moderate risk. NCAA has reclassified, we're trying to get New York State to do it, because it's creating this artificial barrier, shouldn't be good.
Right, so I just wanna make sure we're all understanding, you know. That's all, you know, so another of those guidelines, and I understand that the June event is June twenty-eighth, or the beginning of May, so there is time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
There is time.
We'll talk to SS County Health about that, because that's unusual, that's what anywhere else that the board has.
But when you said, you know, to go by the guidelines, that's for them, we're saying that for an event that comes to a class, you know, the said group needs to be vaccinated, you know. But they're not holding up the force that exempts them, but coming into the June event, and we, why would we make that exemption? You're saying, there's not enough time, but we're in the beginning of May and you're at the end of June.
They just began announcing the availability of vaccines, they haven't, there's no, been no distribution plan.
We should talk about masks, so.
No, I'm just saying, like, even, even if we go with the current criteria, which is eighteen and older.
The only people in this group that will have big spirits wearing masks are gonna be the triatlans.
I'm talking about the triatlans.
Don't confuse them, reiterate the question.
Okay, so you said, I believe that you said, for the June event, we should go by the guidelines in New York State, not on the guidelines that we're setting for today.
Well, they're not materially different, the only difference I'm aware of is that there's a requirement to wear a mask under average.
No, I'm talking about, about the vaccination, so you're saying that if they're old enough for the June event, that they'll be vaccinated?
No, youth, no, absolutely not.
If they're, if they're above the age to be vaccinated, eighteen currently, eighteen and older.
The old schedule.
But they have parents with them and they have.
So we're saying all adults who are eighteen.
That's right, I'm trying to clarify.
So MJ, just to piggyback on what you were saying, and just kind of what the feedback with the community is that. Uh, earlier in the week, when you have, uh, the younger group.
Yes.
They would be generally on Main Street, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, en masse. Uh, and if, um, if there is a, within your protocol to, um, uh, who's gonna have oversight over their, you know, their child wearing masks on these streets, and then, um. I understand that from your organization, you kind of have to kind of, uh, put it on to the parents to, to have, to manage their, their children to put the mask on. Um, what, I guess from my perspective in the community is that if, that we see something like that en masse and stupid, like young adults who. Who are not required to be vaccinated and are disregarding the mask mandate, it's gonna sour the community.
Understood, George.
I understand.
To events in general.
You're familiar with our Summit Society group, they of course hands that up.
Yes.
And them to be heavily on Main Street, any hotspot there might be, to make sure there are not large groups of unprotected kids or people around, I guarantee you.
Okay, and I think that's something that the community would like to know.
Yeah.
Because, uh, and it's unfortunate, but a lot of the responsibility of built, because we're the, happens to be with you are, I think, because you're one of the first ones.
Understood.
We're going to be experiencing.
Yeah.
Because they got it all out of sight, out of mind, because you're over in the fields, but what they see is, you know.
Understood. I mean, I, I gotta be honest, being down there late last year, it was kind of crowded and messy down there, and there was not much control over that. And the advantage we have, we have groups, better chance of trying to control them.
It took us a, as a village board, we were, uh, a little late, but when we got on more than we, we started to manage it much more, much better. And you're correct on that, and it just, um, it's unfortunate, I just, the random tourists from three hours away, disregarding the mask. Okay, this is the choice, but we're talking about what would be the, the foundation of our community, this like the event. And we just wanna make sure that, I guess maybe, I don't wanna speak up or, we wanna ensure that it gets all on the right floor.
And you're, and you are, you're the first person out, you're the first one, the first person to play itself.
I did watch a little something around, we did talk about the mask and the playing, and then I went to the vaccines, and now with mask and vaccine, so it did go a little certain.
Yeah, no, we understand completely, and we also understand that the impression that comes out this year is gonna be very important to our future. So, uh, we're gonna do everything in our power, and I think those of you who've worked with thirty plus years, know, we do everything we say we're gonna do, we do. We give our best, we invest in it, there's always so much we can do, we'll do everything we can to survive this event. That's where people will depend out of the lip, so. But you're very important to us.
Greg, I have a question for you, the quality of swim at the Northwood Beach. There's two, two colors going in the water there, the water's super shallow, it's all mud, and then the stones along the shore are like that high. How are they gonna get out of the water? We, we have a lot of, without cutting their legs open and, you know, running, trying to get out of the shore.
Yeah, we have all sorts of systems we place at other events that we can model after, that we, you know, we, at other places, we actually build ramps. That we temporarily put in the water, either running up the ramps, we have basically the rubber bar masks. And we put the cover over anything that's, any protrusions of our.
We're gonna do in ten minutes, we have.
And we can do that.
We're like a safety hazard.
Now, we're gonna look at that, I mean, those specific details, we do that many times a year, so that's not, that's not a huge issue. We'll make it safe, because we have to protect our inhabitants. So we'll design whatever system that we need, whether it's, whether it's a temporary ramp in there, whether it's match, whether we, uh, whether we drop in some type of, uh, carpeting. To protect people's feet as they walk up into it, but, yeah, that, that's a pretty much.
So they're gonna be running out of the, you know, it's happening, they're gonna be walking and be careful.
Yeah, but we control them at, you know, what are the Ironman events, or, or secondary, so, there's places that are a lot worse than that. Okay. We make it work, so. The train professional.
And a question of the athlete's story.
Okay, again, we're, we're in flux now, because we're trying to get contracts from different venues, so we don't really wanna let, get the word out right now, but. In general, um, we realize that we have no village parking lot for this summer. And not, so no, no use at all, so we're looking at moving, and I met with Butch Martin yesterday, we're looking at moving the majority of our. So we're looking at moving, and I met with Butch Martin yesterday, we're looking at moving the majority of our non-race activities to the horse show grounds, just for our year. So, so Athlete Production, Merchandise Tank, and the Athlete Village, you know, the Ironman Village, we have a spot, we have a pretty good setup in mind for the horse show. We wouldn't make that one.
But not with that.
No. What's your comment? Um, we are dropping, numbers are dropping daily, because people are deferring, considering that they're concerned about COVID, or they're concerned about the, that the race is going to be canceled, so they don't want to be stopped, or they're not training. We sold out, you know, we were in the 2,000 angle, we sold out in 2019, and we are basically, we're going to hit a 20% reduction very easily, based on the withdrawal rate that we have now. You know, if that's, if that's what you guys put on us and say, hey, you're going to be at 20%, we'll be, we'll be down to the 25%. If not lower. So it'll kind of be a race as a whole where we have.
But isn't it, Greg, just to clarify, isn't it traditionally the amount of athletes that actually come and participate is about 2,400?
Yeah. So it'll be the same thing, you know, you just take that number and you ratio it. So if we traditionally sign up 3,000, 2,400 show up, if now we're limited to 2,400 that are signed up, you knock down another 400 or 500, and we'll probably be on 2,000. And I can't guarantee it, and I can't, I know we'll probably get in trouble for throwing numbers out there, but the, the numbers are going to be significantly less than we expect. I don't think the community would be upset with you saying that. You have any questions? You know, I just would like to just add, like, you know, some of the points that people want to hear about, some of the potential areas of concern, the more of those we know about, the more we can communicate directly. So I think sending those ideas along would be really helpful. You know, that's, the word of concern specifically, so that we can deploy and make sure that those are addressed.
Uh, I think, again, I don't want to speak for the board, we're not in the business of meeting, but that's not how, we just want to. And we're, we're likely to make sure that they can help in, and the community is, is on board and safe with that. However, that allows.
It's probably the same, because they're in a bigger choice, you know, they don't think this new place is.
And I'd like to just echo that, you know, I've lived here almost all my life, and I, so I, you know, I'm all into that, and I totally understand that I'm going to express a concern and a conflict, but I think that as much, the, the community pride, that of us being able to bring this event back after a two-year hiatus, and bringing it back safely, and bringing it back as, as a model for our country and even the world, because I'm not sure if any other Ironman event that we have on our board pool, we're going to provide, is going to ask for this type of protection, and require that more athletes and volunteers and so on. I think the late classic leading the way by being one of the first Ironman events, I'll say, that were coming up in 1999, and then coming back here and restarting after this COVID, you know, nightmare the last couple of years. I think that's, could be a source of pride as much as anything else.
And I think if we can demonstrate that we have the community to help people, because that's the safety of the relationship.
Anything else? So you, you had mentioned you're going to go back to the whole plan and present.
I'm going to come back with a much more specific plan, that will have a little more specific about how we're reducing. You know, it's a little more challenging, we're not dealing with individuals, so to get the, you know, 20%. You know, we have to work in divisions and things to do, so we're going to, we're going to have that done in a couple of weeks, and I'll be working on it as we workshop. Here's our specific plan. All of August, August, June, we'll get those requirements, because we have that, we know that. And then that way, we'll have a current game plan, based with the knowledge we have next month, I can be very specific about who's moving, and I can communicate that message. We're going to need help with hospitality industry, we're being asked to move people out of here, we're going to make sure that they can get out of reservations and things too. So, you know, that's important.
I guess my, my point is that being able to conform the degree of public.
Yeah.
Having a more detailed plan as to what, and then that could generate some more feedback, and have a more surgical sort of judging of these issues. And I guess that same goes for Ironman, is that they're still in flux, when do you look to base the draft plan? We must be in a draft plan already.
Yeah, send the draft plan out, I'm going to ensure, it shouldn't change that much, based on what our discussions are today, so. Get a chance, we're getting your questions, but it'll be that, it's all.
Right, so just the final plan, we'll have, I believe you're just giving, you know, we all have, we just have, we just talked about the mandated.
For sure. Do we have any documentation from any health officials or anybody about how to treat the vaccinated population? What are the requirements or protocols that we should be using for that? If we're going to all be vaccinated, all this stuff is superfluous that I have in here. So how do we deal with people that are vaccinated?
Well, there is some things on New York State.
Well, that'll be helpful, the state can help provide us with some guidance on how to manage a vaccinated group.
I mean, obviously, vaccinations are much less, there is much less, you're not in here to manage a vaccinated group.
Right, because there still could be problems, because we just don't know what those are.
But you go to, you know, where are your best?
And we're under, that's some of my time constraint, because at the eight-week mark is when we traditionally want to have orders for our athletes, and we're coming out, and I don't know if by next, by the board meeting on the 11th, if you would have a vote. Obviously, we would appreciate that, because I think we can't wait any longer than that, everyone needs to know. But I mean, you're, that will work a bit to the 20% reduction, et cetera, and the full vaccination, so that, then it could be said, no issues whatsoever. The exercising and reduction gives us a couple of weeks to manage that, because it's not going to be the very happy people. Outside of the class. Anybody else? Okay?
Thank you, George, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, one thing that wasn't on the agenda, is that Patrick is going to update us on where we are with the possibility of having a trolley. So while you're standing out there waiting, you know where it is.
MJ, losing your mind? So we can track the trolley?
Well.
I have no idea how long, you know.
So.
It's like waiting for the new service.
There you go, all right.
We're waiting for the county.
Perfect. So, for those that don't know, I'm the past 12, I'm the technical coordinator for the village, and what I put together is, I'd say it's somewhat a proposal, but it's kind of done, is a platform that we can use, or that can be used, you know, to keep track where the, you know, the trolley and public transportation, the Placid Express is. And like, for instance, you pop it up, I don't think, some of this information I just grabbed off of the, like, Essex County website, so if there's information wrong, it's probably because it might be, and it can easily be fixed and corrected. So you have somewhere that pops ups where you can put, you know, like, hey, these are up-to-date events, for instance, for us for COVID, we can give like a little warning, be like, hey, if you're intending to ride, you need to follow the guidelines that we're setting for all rides in the area. And so this is what it looks like. These are, I'm not sure if I got that stop right, but these are all of the stops. The green bus is where the, that's actually, that should be where the bus is right now. I have a volunteer who is just driving the route, and it, it updates every, that there 10 or 20 seconds at where the location of the bus is. So during this, while I'm talking, you can watch as the, you know, the bus will move, so that way, if you're at a stop, it's up over on Greenwood, and you have the schedule, and you know that the bus is going to be headed that direction. You can get a better understanding and estimate where it is. This will let you be able to, you know, just jump, kind of see whether or not it's worth walking to another stop, or walking to, you know, the destination you're trying to get to. And it's a really, uh, maybe cheap's not the best way to say, but it's a really efficient way to do things. It's very inexpensive. I, I did a good deal of research, and I ended up connecting with the GIS manager for a city in Mississippi, and this is what they do. Instead of hiring out a, a larger company to build a GTFS structured platform, which is like, it's either Google or general transit specific format, which I put together a small one for this, I just didn't finish the routing information completely. Instead of doing that, what you do is you take a mobile device, and using the ArcGIS Esri account that we have, the village has at least, with an addition of, I think it costs $50, to enable tracking of that account. So for instance, if you were going to create this for the Placid Express, it's a minimum of $350 a year for the ability to load this app onto, for instance, an iPhone or an Android, plug that into the bus, you can set a schedule, so it turns on automatically when the bus, you know, when the schedule starts, turns off when the schedule stops, when they go on breaks, and you just leave it there. It's low maintenance, it's easy to use. The web platform is very modular, it's the same thing that all of the other web maps I've put together is hosted on, so we're not responsible for servers, we're not responsible for cloud storage. It is a pretty effective and easy method to kind of keep track of where the, you know, public transportation is. One of the other things that I, I can't even have it so, the, the names of the lots, or the names of the, the stops will pop up, and I, I'm working on figuring out a better way for it, but currently, if you click on the bus stops, I have it set, so it, it'll pull up the PDF of the actual stop, so you can see, you know, just in case, if you're at a stop that actually has a physical, like, I think the Hannovers has a, a box that has the schedules on it. If it's not there, it's the only, took the last one, this way, instead of having to navigate to the website, you can just click on this, and then in addition to that, it is pretty easy to set it up. You know, I have a link to the village's website, just by default, you can set up, so it, you can route people to wherever, you know, the information's pertinent. We can have, it's essentially a really modular platform to inform the public.
So as a consumer, if I'm waiting for the trolley, am I going to take a picture of a QR code, and it's going to download the app, and?
It's a website essentially, so.
So we have to have information on there that says, go down to this website, upload this website.
Or just use a QR code that they scan and opens the website for you. It'll format to anyone's phone or mobile device.
And if you, let's just say if you're using, I think, an iPhone, you can, you can create a shortcut on your desktop, you know, go to the website.
Well, but you got to remember, we're thinking of consumers, you know, so if they're coming out of a hotel, they're standing at the high peaks, and they want to get down, smoke signals, you know, how are they going to, how are they going to find that out? How are they going to know that the bus is coming in five minutes, or the bus is coming in 20 minutes?
Hey, Patrick, it's.
Yes, they could, but.
Was that a?
Hey, it's Kate Thompson, we can also, just to hang along on Jackie's question, we can also link this into the Village and Town websites too, right? Because it's just a URL.
Yes, yeah, you can put this on, you can integrate it to any website, very easily, so yes.
Well, you can, but don't make it confusing for the consumer.
I don't know, some, somebody.
You to say, because you are the expert, you take somebody like me, sitting here going, oh my God, they're going to the bus, you know, you don't want that to happen.
We have to go in there, if we have a QR, if we want to check in, they can scan it, and it's automatic, or you're done.
Hold on.
But they're going to have to leave a page up, in essence, otherwise they're not going to.
Will it be a national?
It'll be app.
No, but it's not, he's not, he's saying it's less expensive to go web-based than it is to, or a third party to, to build an app, so you can click on the app, and then have it track.
It's kind of.
This is the whole cost way of obtaining what we've always wanted.
Doesn't do any good if people don't use it.
Yeah.
So Patrick.
It will, like, you can create a shortcut on your, on your phone, and click on it, and it opens up a web page.
How much does a bus to create an app? I hear the.
It depends.
I mean, some are inexpensive.
This could be expensive.
Roughly.
So.
Can't give it up if that option.
So Patrick?
Yeah.
I, I was talking to the IT guys up at Essex County, and they're thinking of doing similar things for some of the broader Essex County buses. Have you had an opportunity to connect with them, to see what they're up to?
I believe this was kind of the start off to that.
Okay.
He's presenting this to us, and then he's going to present it to the county.
Yeah.
Patrick, because it might be, that might be a route to develop, the bet, what all towns and cities are doing for this is developing an app that you can put in either the Android or the Apple Phone Store, App Store, then somebody can download it and then use it when they want to. I mean, that's the easiest thing to do, right? But it does take some investment in mobile app development.
Well, the best bit of this.
Without, this is the fact you can do with minimal amount of investment. So if you want to go larger, then we have to start.
With even like minimal amount of investment, if you have an app, this, it, it just, it's the best. Because for instance, you're going to then have to direct people to either, you have to make a, you know, an Android version, you have to make an Apple version, you have to make a version that works with every different device in between, so you don't want to even marginalize people.
With various degrees of.
But, yeah, but this, it's just a website. It can pull up on any device, it can go with Chrome, Safari, whatever, a phone can connect to you, like the internet, it can open up.
Is it accessible via a QR code?
Yes, completely, yep.
Okay. That's probably the easiest way to do it.
Yeah, pops up.
But his phone has multiple tabs, it's not, I have 16 tabs open on my phone right now, so you just go find it, and then you scan.
The tracking works on your mobile, like, during the movie, I was making sure that it was working while things were going on, and you just pull it up. Technically, what it's doing is a little auto refreshing every couple of seconds to let you know where the bus is.
It's almost a pressure.
I was glad to see you got through Main Street quickly.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's one of the other.
It's almost a hammer.
It's, it, oh, its battery's really low, but it, it tells you how fast the bus is going, which is information that doesn't need to be to the public, but what that can do is, if I know how far away it is from the next stop, and we're going to try and get the best, it'd be like, oh, it's five minutes away from stop A, stop B, stop C.
Is it the driver's personal phone?
Uh, yeah.
It, it is, so we're going to have to rely on the driver to borrow his phone.
That is.
Oh, you go buy, oh, okay, all right.
That's. Correct, yeah, that's a personal phone.
So you said $350, that per bus?
Yes, $350 per bus.
Plus the phone.
Plus the phone. And that's pretty much the minimum, and that's, I'd be very confident saying the least expensive implementation of this year I'm going to find, not to mention the fact that it's kind of done. The thing that's waiting is just the buses to be, you know, activated, if you want to think about it, or I guess approved to be activated, whatnot.
And as you said, the county's looking into this, and if they adopt the program and it works for all their buses, they may go with an app somewhere, I mean, this is just a foot in the door start.
Yeah.
A good start.
I, I think it would, from my perspective, Patrick, and Patrick, I think this would open up, or increase a demographic usage, because it's native to their everyday sort of lives.
Yeah.
Is there another segment that relies on the trolley that we would have to come up with a different avenue, that maybe is an older. Maybe an older generation that relies on it? Yes, and, but, this would, and instead of, open up generally, the younger sort of demographic never really used this or didn't use it as often. But, uh, anyone who's in a range from middle age down, the QR code, they have the code and they just will know, this is where I'm at, this is where it's coming, I can see how it'll increase valuation. What we want to use this maybe during the world universities? Maybe we want to invest in, you know, that? But that comes with a increased cost and continuing cost for maintenance and, uh-
Talking about demographics, obviously the Greenwood residents use it the most. They're the ones with the limited income and the older generation, the ones that just barely know what a cellphone is, so.
They'll figure it out all that once.
All they need is one person to figure it out and they'll all go to that person.
There's something that we're reading very well, but talk to those Greenwood and have, uh, maybe a third party or a public citizen who donate maybe a TV and then have, and then have literally the app displayed all the time. They'll know when it comes up.
And it's not changing with the trolley.
So they have it all the current time.
Yeah.
They're already using the trolley now, so you're not changing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, now this could be a very legend, but I have heard that there are times, depending upon who the driver is, that to accommodate some riders, they will deviate. Does that, does that happen?
It's not very invited to know. But we'll be very aware of it now.
Yeah, well, that's, it's part of the work.
That's why we can't get on the schedule.
Yeah. It's, part of it is that they are required, you know. Yeah.
If you call in and you need a handicap pickup, you can go through.
Or any pickup.
That would take you off.
You have to, the schedule has more information about the specific. Then speaking of demographics, one of the other things that can be tied into this is Ezra has a really good survey platform. Uh, so we could have attached to this, be like, you know, either on the bus or at a stop, like scan this, fill out a survey. How was your ride? Is there a destination you, you know, you prefer to go? Uh, how long did you have to wait? You know, what was the goal of your ride? So that way we can get that information to be like, essentially figure out who is using these and if it's the demographic that we want to be using it or if there's a demographic of people that we can expand these towards.
Under survey one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think to your point, Patrick, too, with the survey, you know, getting an app like this out there and in people's hands to use might also, we can also maybe write into a campaign to get people to use public transportation more often, especially just given that, you know, we've got some challenges in the next two years on parking lots and et cetera. This might be a way to help just, you know, make, um, the area more accessible while all the other activity is taking place.
Yeah, exactly. And one of the things that other municipalities have done is kind of add this to, for instance, somewhere that shows where all the parking is. Um, you know, for someone coming out of town, being able to have a clear cut view of like, oh, this is the municipal parking and then being able to, you know, tap on the icon for the municipal parking and has all the rates, all the rules, all the times in one quick area and then have a link to go to the site that actually has more in-depth information regarding to the parking rules and regulations throughout the different seasons.
Patrick, not to put you on the spot, but could you bring up Waterline Main Street?
Uh, like the water map?
The Waterline on Main Street. And the reason I'm doing this is that twelve years ago, we were on the board, we've been collecting GIS information and collecting it and collecting it, never had anything to show for it other than data. And Patrick, the last year has been putting it in. And I'm gonna put him on the spot, but I want him to show you the Waterline on Main Street. If it's anything like when he downloaded for me, he's going to show you a shut-off that was put in service thirty, thirty minutes or an hour ago.
Yeah.
Did I put you on the spot too?
No, 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 it's just right here. And this isn't public, entirely public information yet, but eventually it will be, but it's-
But this is what's coming, this is how accurate it is. There's a Waterline, correct?
Yes.
And these are all shut-offs that have just been put in place and, and all that.
Well, um, what this was done, we're press, uh, at four oh four, that day? Do you love it? Yeah, that was done like fourteen minutes ago. Um, so they added that, uh, forty or so minutes ago. And there's, there's still plenty to do. Um, but the Main Street water shut-off map is working out really well. Where as they're going along, they're able to GPS the location of all the different valves, shut-offs, uh, lines, pipes. So that way in the future, we know where they all are. Uh, we're gonna be able to have a record of it. I mean, same for the electric department. We have electric mats that we're working on getting-
Telephone pole.
Yeah, electric utility pole, underground. And especially for this, uh, Main Street project, was a really good opportunity to potentially tear up the Main Street so we can go and get that information as we're putting it into the ground.
But I mean, this compares to right now, and I think if you add that, there's, we don't know where shut-offs are, we don't know where lines run, we're running into lines we didn't know were there. This is really going to be state of the art when we're done.
And they've made a massive amount of, well, uh, let's see if it will move. Uh, they've made a lot of progress recently just from being able to go and collect stuff. Uh, let's see if I can turn the bells off. Uh, but yeah, there's, there's a lot to, to collect and a lot to, lot to deal with, which is always, always fun.
And with this, Kim, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but you're standardizing a lot of your poles so that when a worker goes out, the same equipment is there, they know what they're running into or if they, they're going because they have a problem with a pole, they can pull it up on this map, they can actually see a picture of it, they can see what equipment's there, what they might need to bring with them.
Yes.
I mean, when this is all done, it really will be really nice.
And this is running on, kind of-
Do you search one thousand seven, C nine? This is your favorite.
No, this is-
Keeps you up at night. This is one where the pictures have labeled on it. Did you get the trolley scheduled? Unstop shopping. So if someone had never been here, they could be confused and they pulled it up on their map, they can see that. Customers here.
Yeah, damn tooler, the-
So the most of, most, some of the load out of this is served from land and some is served from actually Buck Island.
Yeah, but it's, it's definitely work, you know, all the maps are work in progress, but it's a, a progress that is really chugging along and putting us in. I mean, some people from Dank were over in the electric office about too long ago. Um, and this is something that not, not many municipalities have. Uh, we've definitely catapulted ourselves ahead, um, to kind of the forefront where a lot of places should be just by being able to utilize this locational information. And it's something that's developing every day. Like I'm working on, um, getting the camp addresses added here for the fire department so they're able to, you know. Everything up there is technically twelve Georgian West Link. So now they can have an up-to-date camp address map whenever there's an issue.
Or what you're saying, there's a fire and they need-
Or, exactly, yeah.
I mean, you say not a lot of municipalities have this. They were probably like we were a year ago. We had a lot of information, but nothing put into, to a map visualization.
Exactly.
We've had a presentation with Patrick before, but not when you two have been on the board. Maybe at some point down the road, we can bring you back in and let you show us all the good stuff.
We need to get you guys, uh, I guess just everyone like login information to view that Village map. I had a, just like the in-house, um, GIS viewer of current projects that eventually I'd like to get to a point where we have a public-facing platform um, for relative, well, information. Um, but yeah, that would, that would be fantastic.
Great.
Great.
Thank you, Patrick.
What's the presentation to the county, what is your?
I do not know.
You have to be special.
Yes. Um, as soon as they are available, I guess. But- Yeah, nice job, Patrick.
And thank you again, Patrick. And Brad, I kind of rushed you before, not knowing how long we would be with Iron Man and lacrosse, but we have, anything else on Main Street you'd like to update us on? Any questions that came out of the business location meeting? I mean, this would be a great time you got Brad here.
Um, I didn't bring my notebook, but, uh, we're so concerned from a couple of people just, uh, we have slapped on Fridays. It's not a concern of mine because I know it's a construction site, but they thought maybe the guys weren't cleaning up the way they should on Friday.
Any sense of, yeah.
Basically, it looks like a construction zone.
Like it is.
Exactly. So I didn't, I started bringing it up.
I mean, we were there Friday, we, we had the Elgin up there, we went up and down the street. We moved all the plates, we opened up as much parking as we possibly could. There's no way that they can have it, like it's not a construction zone for the weekends. So they just have to be told. You can't sugarcoat it with them. They have to be told that or it's just gonna keep coming back to that same thing.
I did get feedback saying that you, there has been spraying down the street more often.
Yeah, we mean by mother nature.
By us. Seems like mother nature sprayed us down.
Oh, yeah, oh wait, but I would say that was a positive.
Yes, we, we went up there a lot.
Jason's been out communicating with businesses and people. I guess we need to keep that communication out, might help people.
Like I said, I haven't thrown it at them, but I said I would bring it up.
Yeah, I worry such.
I feel like I felt the same way as I'm feeling, I'm like, we're gonna have to kind of get used to it. This is going to be here for a little while and I know it's not ideal and I know that we don't want, you know, computers and so on, like, so like, but we're gonna have to go through some growing things.
Well, one of the things we found when we first started, we did start moving some of this a little further back, but then we were having issues the next day. Because once you make it look like it's not a construction zone, then it's, the next day we have to fight for three hours to make it become a construction zone again.
Someday there was a white Mercedes going down the other way.
It's very, it's very difficult too.
And I-
Also, especially the ditch line and stuff like that, there's just no way that it can be, we can't bring in hot, we, I mean, they don't even have the asphalt plant open yet. Start paving some of these, yeah, so. Um, some of it, we can clean up as much as we possibly can and other than that, it's just gonna, I mean, once the end of June gets here, it could be-
I have another question, once they go, like, at the end of June?
Uh, everything will be off from Main Street. Parking, I think, is what they tell us, it will be paved back in. So, I'm buying your phone.
And I think it's safe to say from the construction meetings I've been at, they kind of were intimating that this, the worst of it is their beginning.
Well, the worst is this year.
Every year is going to get easier and I would imagine even in the fall, it'll be easier than the spring. I mean, the Waterline was a big, um-
Yes, but we are behind a little bit on the Waterline.
Still, I say due to-
Services are gonna be uh, longer than the water main is, so services are gonna take longer.
And that's the next phase that'll be, that's already started, right?
They started, the high peaks went on, the new Waterline. They should be just about finished for that high peaks. Will be the first one on the section sixteen inch that's in service from H Street, number one. Couple other things, we got a couple of changes that we had to add. What is the, uh, San Jerry sewer line up Sarnik Avenue? That's gonna have to be relocated, go to the way of the drainage. And also the water main up there, we found is in extremely poor condition, so we're gonna have to extend the water main from number one to Elm Street. We're gonna off-size it from six to twelve. Wasn't in the plan to do that, but after running into a few unseen things up there and then seeing the conditions, crazy if we don't get it out from under our construction.
We don't want to be tearing it up for the next five years.
No, that's, that's our main concern, especially in that intersection.
Where is that again, Brad?
Number one, Main, Elm Street.
Okay, thank you.
But other than that, pretty much, a lot of the drainage work is done. Uh, the one unit in number one park, there is water running to that unit now. That drain that used to always overflow on Elm Street, that will no longer, it's connected now. That'll no longer happen. Run out of there, they, in Elm Street, so there's been a lot of positive things that, you know, but, uh, we are still a long ways from seeing a huge, huge, making progress though.
Brad, did they connect the old drain, the overflow drain at one main? Or did they put a new overflow drain?
No, it goes from the, uh, filtration unit into the bore tech unit. And, uh, it's like it did before.
It's just like before.
Yes.
Can I, um, suggest something? When the guys, when, next time we get a water main, when they open up the valve, when they do slowly?
Yeah, it was slowly.
You know, because the pressure, water pressure blows stuff apart.
It's very, very slowly open. It's air pressure they're having a problem with that water.
And I guess that goes back to, and we talked about it before, you know, we talked about push notifications, like the attacks. So like if the water was shut off on my building, I would shut off the water at my building until it's turned back on and then I would turn it on slowly. Because I versed like one of the apartments too when it came back on.
But the, the only issue with that is everything that's been done has been an emergency at that moment, moment.
Yeah, so when it goes off, that's funny, I get a text, the water's off, great, so I'm gonna shut off the water, my main into my building and you wait for it to come back on and control it, not buzz it.
So that's how not, I mean, if you don't have water, you know there's a problem, so you could, you could shut it off independently.
Yeah, if I know before it shuts back on.
Yeah.
But you had, had to shut water off.
You only have to be able to-
Right, yeah.
We, we do, we're almost at two hundred subscribers now for the, um, daily construction forecast update. Um, we do have the ability, both Haley and I, to push out a really quick email. It takes literally maybe five minutes to write it and then send it. So if, if there is a situation where there does need to be a really quick notification, we can use the MailChimp or email platform we have going forward for the, in the meantime.
And I appreciate that. I think, you know, this day and age, I think people aren't checking their emails and, you know, it's a text that comes through on your phone. Water's off, water's back on, and I think at some point just driving to that um, for emergency situations.
Well, the issue up there is, Peter was there, I mean, by the time we would have got the notification there, that's how fast.
Yeah.
I mean, literally, how long was it off? It couldn't have been off for the twenty minutes? Maybe.
Yeah, I was in the woods.
Yeah, see, that's what I mean, even if you got the notification, you wouldn't have been able to get it.
Right.
So that's-
The one that where the valve was backwards?
Yeah, that's, that was the last one that happened, that was the one that closed, would have affected you.
It was kind of buck-like.
But, I mean, we can, we, we hopefully will have less and less of these as we go down this end of Main Streets. I think we've run into just about everything that we could go far.
Which is par for the course for the last one.
But, uh, as far as turning it on, it's turned on slow. That's, we had a fire engine open before it was even turned on. So that's just air trapped in your building, that's causing it.
If they open up all their taps as they're opening up, would that help get rid of the air and the air damming?
Yeah, but you got, the issue is, is if you're not there and you didn't know it was off, you opened the line.
Right.
It starts blowing air. Normally what somebody does, first reaction is to slam a shut and that's what causes it to blow something apart.
Um, do you, I got, I got an update. That's now not starting yesterday with seventeen.
Seventeen.
Um, do you want to just mention that to the group? That's the paving, that's what, that's what's gonna be done from, I guess it was-
It's gonna start at Elm Street, go, uh, the first phase is gonna go from Elm Street to just past Price Chopper. And then it's gonna switch to night work from Price Chopper out so they can do the joints in the concrete. Basically from Elm Street to Price Chopper is gonna be a, just mill a couple inches,[1794.84] Basically, from Elm Street to Price Chopper is gonna be a, just mill a couple inches, a few inches off and put a few inches back. And then the rest of the way out is just the joints in the concrete and then an overlay. So that's gonna, that's scheduled to start seventeen.
So, so seventeen, I was gonna enjoy.
Should, it should go pretty quick.
Two ways to look at it, it's, it's either inconvenience or we're lucky to get the work done, I think it's the lucky to get the work done.
Yeah.
Definitely be grateful.
Well, the, the thing that's gonna be one of our benefits is it's the same contractor we got working on Main Street that had that.
And also, if I'm not mistaken, the reason they're doing the day work from Elm Street to Price Chopper and then night work beyond is just so that the motels along the way and the people there aren't being kept up at night.
That was part of it and also, uh, the reduced traffic that they're gonna have to deal with, with cutting those joints in the concrete, crossing the road.
Okay, yes, right.
Because they're gonna basically be crossing the road, not staying in the lane and being dragged around, they're gonna go to each joint and actually physically chop out a chunk of that concrete to try to prevent those heaves from coming back.
Do you know what he's talking about, the speed bumps, like once you pass Price Chopper before you get to the entrance, old military road, it's there's cement under there, and in the past, they tried to repair it one way, it didn't work, and now they're gonna go and cut a gap and try to keep it from working.
And that paving eventually is all the way to the Serdak.
Way to the way.
That's the fucking time of the time in my last decade, I don't think. My name's Jay Jones on board at that. I don't know, it's atrocious.
They did it in two thousand and five when they did Main Street. Uh, they paved it out to just pass Carroll Road, and then they did that overlay maybe four years ago. They were over at Serdak, and then they just paved it. Again, portions of it, they just did last year, year before, maybe.
This ties in with all the structure drainage work they did last year, correct?
They actually have a, they have a few things on Serdak Avenue that they're gonna be, you know, it sounds like next week and repairing is, uh, ready cross from there. That new eye doctors. They have to fix a collapse in the road right there. Starting next week, shouldn't be, it should be quick, other than that, that's all I have.
Anybody else?
Uh, can you to remind you? Sheila Preston's request.
Yeah, we're working on.
Okay.
A request from Sheila Preston who wondered if a pickleball court could be added at the tennis courts, and at this point, I don't have an answer on that as that was a donation to the school and through the village, and we may have a contract, we need to keep it, but we're looking into whether we do or don't, I've actually handed it off to the development commission, Haley Breen.
Okay.
And Janet List is looking and do it as well with a contract, but if we can accommodate it, we will, but if we can't, it's a good suggestion, we try it on.
She reached out to me as well, just a, a, I just. Yeah, it's growing, it's why I just, um, I remember it was a donation.
The donation was especially so that the school would have a place to hold tournaments and it interferes with that, but we'll just have to see if, 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 if it can be both uses.
I wonder if, I don't know.
So is it a restriping of the tennis court?
It might, I think it might be.
Just a strip.
I know that they play at Ole Miss School.
At night, yeah, Thursdays, Wednesdays, it's a, yeah.
Let's hope it works out.
Carol Dawn, Carol Dawn, she donated like Katie Brand, you know, it was a substantial donation, yeah, and then the Dan family. So, I, there's a lot of these.
I'm sure.
Anybody else? We kept this one shorter than the last one, a good triangle. Well, thank you very much.
You wanna contact the IT people?
Yeah.
Jim, Jim, I'm a leader. Of all of us. He's twenty-five minutes.
Right.
No, I'm all.
He didn't really do that, he was on his own.
Yeah, yeah.
He had the, yeah, it's been going on for years. Turkey or something like that, happens a beach every year, we didn't even know about it, it's been going on for years, but it'll be in your pockets.